Good morning. It's Wednesday, August 2nd, 2017, and we're in the Senator Hearing Room, Cordell Square, 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem for our weekly Board of Commissioners meeting. We start our meeting with a pledge of allegiance. Please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, we traipse through the year, we go through cold, and today it's hot and going to get hotter, but it's not too bad right here. We start with public comment. Let's see, as usual, unfortunately, nobody signed up to take advantage of that. So next I have the presentation with a quarterly report from Grow EDC, and Allison McKenzie is here to tell us about all her and their activities. Good morning.
That made a funny sound. Good morning. It's so nice to be here with you this morning. Again, I'm Allison Ford McKenzie with Grow EDC, and we work in the territory from Amesville in Cyo up through Brighton Bush and Marion Forks. We were very active, as you can see, in the last quarter, and honestly, the stuff that we did in the last quarter and through July is starting to blur a little bit because so much of our attention right now is focused on the tourism efforts surrounding the eclipse. I'm going to start first with some of the stats and then go into the highlights of a couple of the major programs that we've been working on. If you look at our statistics, you'll notice we had a lot more new clients than normal in this last quarter. We had eighteen new clients and a lot more one-on-one facilitations with people. Most of that was due to folks who are wanting to do something around the eclipse. I don't know if all of those people will continue after we're done with this period. So let's go talk about the two main projects we've been working on: youth engagement and tourism. We'll start with tourism first. A year ago, we had no coordinated regional tourism effort, and then following our rural tourism studio training with Travel Oregon, a number of people were very interested in being involved in tourism on a regional scale in our area. And out of that process, one of the projects was launching a regional festival that would showcase the area and focus on more than one location. River Fusion 22, which is our first multi-day, multi-location event in the region, is launching over Eclipse weekend, so it will run from August 18th through the morning of the 21st. And the reason for doing it that weekend is that there will already be a lot of visitors here. Travel Oregon has since supported us with a $10,000 grant. Del Raba has given us $2,500, and we matched $2,500 to pull this off and pay for everything in this first year. And the reason that we're doing this is to showcase our area to visitors so they'll want to come back, to increase spend for our local businesses and our nonprofit organizations who are organizing events, and to experiment with collaborating with each other and seeing how that works across community lines on something this important. As you know from some of the studies that you've done at the county, when we look at our region, one of the best ways for us to improve our economic health is through tourism. So some of the fun things that are happening that weekend are the Amesville Corn Festival and the Total Eclipse of the Cobb; that'll be on Saturday morning, the 19th; a Howl at the Moon contest and block party held in historic downtown state, including our very first fish rodeo. And you've got to go check that out, see what that's all about. I'm very curious about the fish rodeo. Sublimity Harvest Festival Grounds is hosting camping and fireside celebration, and Samora's Party the night before the eclipse in an effort to break the world's record for most people making Samoras at the same time. That's assuming the fire marshal doesn't come in and say, "No fires at all." That's possible. Camp Taloli is also offering camping. Their cabins are full. Both the Sublimity Harvest Festival Grounds and Camp Taloli still have spots available, and they were slow getting started with camping, but it has really taken off just in the last couple of weeks. Camp Taloli is offering day passes for people who want to come in and use their swimming pool, their ropes course, their trails. Their viewing party will be in the morning of the 21st in a meadow by the river. Sublimity Harvest Festival Grounds will have an eclipse viewing party as well. In Cyo, the Saul Winkout in Cyo is in several locations with camping food, local eats, and do-it-yourself covered bridge tours. Oh, the first River City Music and Art Jamboree is in Mill City on Sunday, and that's from 12 to 8 with local artists and vendors and music there, plus River Rafting Fun Float for Families down the river with e-energy kayaking for anyone who wants to participate, and they'll pull out of the park. And then in Detroit, there are two things going on: the Eclipse Fest, which is downtown at Beer Garden, and also bouncy houses and fun things for the kids, and some music at Kane's Marina. So lots going on, and in preparation for that, we've had two tourism committees very involved in this: our Regional Tourism Strategy Committee and the River Fusion 22 team. There are about 20 people involved in that. We've had 10 meetings in the last quarter; we've had more since then. We've had two joint meetings with all of the event presenters in the last quarter. We had our final meeting in July 19th. People are pretty ready for what's coming, and we've built this as a place to escape and celebrate for those who want to get off the hot concrete, be in our beautiful area, park themselves somewhere nearby, and use our backroads to get to our fun events. And we also know we have lots of friends and family coming in, and we expect a lot of the participants in these events to be people who are already from around here. And the teams have spent a lot of time creating marketing materials, helping event producers get ready, doing publicity, helping them with publicity. Our materials need to go through Travel Oregon for approval, so it takes a little bit longer sometimes, but we're really pleased with what's coming out. The next big project that we've been working on is, and I should say, River Fusion 22 will move to the shoulder season next year in an effort to round out some of that tourism activity for our local businesses who focus on hospitality and tourism. Our second big project in the last quarter of the fiscal year was a youth engagement program, and we had two things going on. One was a pilot project in Mill City. We did the second phase of it. In the first part of the year, we had speakers coming in to talk about essential life skills, career paths, and things along that line. And then in the latter half of the semester, or the school year, we took the kids on seven different field trips based on their career interests, and those included engineering and technology, construction and automotive, culinary arts, healthcare, arts and design, law enforcement, athletics, and military, and natural resources, and Forest Service. So there are 50 kids in the Mill City freshman class; this is who it was aimed at. We had most of the kids participate; some of the kids had moved out of the area, which was kind of surprising, or had been taken out of school before the end of the school year. You can see in their comments in the report, they really enjoyed getting out and about. Logistically, this was much more involved than we expected. It's kind of like if you're submitting a magazine article to somebody, you only court one person at a time. So we'd put the message out, "We'd really like to take our kids to you, whether at work or not." Most of our number-one choices were able to say yes, but not everybody. So there was lots of back-and-forth getting them organized, and then, of course, all the safety protocols you need to have in place if you're taking kids out. We had many students say that this helped them make, think more clearly about this as a career route, some positive and some not positive about what they were thinking. Several hadn't realized the amount of education that might be necessary for some of the things that they were doing. Several said that they wished they could do this more often, and they would like to do it again if they could. And some of the businesses participating, I may not hit all of them, but were Regatta, Modern Building Systems, the Saniam Hospital, Finishing Touch Auto, Willamette Collision, Focus Heating and Cooling, Lucky Dog Design, the Halliport Art Museum, Roth's, the Bush Barn Art Center, the Fish Hatchery, the Detroit Ranger Station, the Marion County Sheriff's Office. We had a football coach, Jed Leeper, talk to the kids about what it's like to go through athletic program and become a coach, and we had two military vets, Larry Etzel and Luke Jaeger, talk to the kids about what it's like to be in military. Trexler Farm, Sugar and Spice Bakery, and Moxie Berry were also part of that. And for the culinary arts kids, we had a surprise at Roth's; the baker happened to be there, so they got the full behind-the-scenes tour. The first thing he had us do is all go into the freezer to see what happens. And at Moxie Berry, we knew these kids didn't get to go out very often, so they created a special small menu for us so they could order off the menu and have something a little bit different to eat. For next year, we're working with the Saniam School District, and our partner in this is OSU Extension, and we're not sure what this will look like next year, but we want to continue this program, not only with the freshmen who will be coming in, but finding a way to continue to engage with these students that we met this year. There's some, I'd really like to see more one-on-one visits, but logistically, we just couldn't take one student to do one thing with two adults. It just didn't work for us this year. We're hoping that we'll be able to continue with these kids, especially with post-high school education opportunities. And then the other youth engagement piece is our Amesville Partners in Education Program that you know about. We've been the fiscal sponsor for them for United Way Grant for a couple of years, and they're in full swing with their summer program. They have about 150 kids coming every Monday, and they understand that Commissioner Brantano, you were able to visit earlier this summer. They also have about 70 or 80 kids coming on their Extra Fridays, which is a surprise to them. The August Academy, which is a three-week program to help kids who might be lagging a bit get a head start before school starts, and that is ready to launch as well. And then this past year, they had an after-school program. United Way was not able to continue with the grant as expected. That was a surprise. The program heard about this after the fiscal year had already begun, and after this program for the summer was already in full swing. But they feel pretty confident that they can bring the resources together to at least go through August Academy, and we're not sure what the after-school program will look like after that. And we're hoping to reapply when it will work better for United Way to do that. The program spent a lot of time in the last six months putting some metrics in place and revising their programs a little bit to help capture some information that United Way wanted, both for kindergarten readiness and third-grade reading levels. So those are already in place, and if they go back to United Way for more funding, those will already be there. Those are the main things that we've been up to. We have so many volunteers involved in this tourism project, literally dozens of them, and I'm very proud of what they're all pulling together, given that we had nothing to work with a year ago and lots of wonderful things happening. And we know that there will be lots of traffic and surprises, and we'll look forward to learning from those as we plan the next event.
Well, Allison, you've been busy. I don't know where to start asking questions. Well, one I was thinking of: so where will you personally be during the eclipse with all those activities? Home in your backyard, or you'll check them all out, or which one are you taking in?
You know, that's a really good question, and I haven't decided. My husband has not been as excited about this as I have been. So, and then he just said, "Well, am I not invited to any of these?" So I'm not sure how this is going to work out. One is, I may be with a friend who's in Cyo and has a big yard and lots of fun family. I may do that because I can get there on the backroads easily. I'm very intrigued by the Camp Taloli, sit-by-the- riverside thing, and if I decide I'm really excited about being there all day long, I may do that. Or I may scoot over to the Sublimity Harvest Festival Grounds for the same reason, because I know how much effort is going into those events. I know they'll be really fun and well-done, and there will be entertainment and things going on afterwards.
You know, they have a nice fishing hole at Camp Taloli. You could see if they steal a bite during the eclipse. It'd be good to know.
Ah, there you go. Yeah, we might. Yeah, we might.
Then I had, I didn't quite follow. You went to Roth's, and what happened in the freezer?
Oh, we went, we went to Roth's. Bob Anderson was taking us around Roth's because part of culinary arts is grocery, and all the kids realized that that's a really wonderful career path. And I'm sorry, I can't remember his first name. He's the main baker for Roth's there, happened to be there, and he said, "Come on in." And so we went back in the bakery, and he said, "This is where it all starts," and he hauled us all, herded us all into the freezer, and then showed us different types of dough. He also gave us tips on which are the best pies. And then we looked through at how they made other products, the bread, the donuts, all kinds of things. It was really fun for the kids to get to see the equipment and...
Then one more thing to talk about also. I love that program. I'm a little concerned as United Way and Commissioner Cameron, maybe you can help backs off or changes their focus. That's been a great program. Talking to a teacher the day I was there, you know, I asked, "Are you seeing this improvement in reading in school, in grades, et cetera?" That should happen, because no other community seems to be that involved. But she said, "What we're seeing so far is just that there isn't any catch-up in the fall. We get right into it where normally it's a month or so of just kind of getting back squared away." So I know it's having an effect, and I hope we can keep it going. And I saw the grandstand they'll use at the Corn Festival this week, that apparently we, and I'm sorry if I don't know exactly where it came from, helped in getting it done. So stage and covered area, if you've seen that, that they'll be using this weekend.
You know, the Corn Festival works like clockwork. I mean, they really don't need a lot of extra help. I haven't seen the grandstand yet. We know if they say they're doing some, it's going to be wonderful.
All right.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
If I will, Mr. Chair, you know, I serve on the United Way board, and they've had their struggles, and they did honor all their contracts. I just want to be clear about that, that they honored the contracts from last year, and there was some miscommunication by somebody that said we were going to, you know, continue and just wasn't able, weren't able to do that. So it's tough on everybody right now, but we're doing some work. Ron Hayes is the new executive director, and he seems to be already doing a 180 to kind of turn things around there. So I think we'll see some good things. One of the programs that they're working on right now is to get $200 in each classroom throughout all three counties.
Right.
And that's going to be a big challenge because teachers are using their own money to buy even food or clothes or whatever for students, and so we think that'll be something that will help get everybody's attention and a good cause. So that's the first thing we're doing to try to turn things around.
Commissioner Cameron, can I interject here? I'm really glad you clarified this about United Way because the program had received assurances that this was moving forward for the next contract year, and I'm glad you said that there was no actual physical contract yet.
Right.
Yeah, so thank you for clarifying that.
Well, just know that if I can find a way to help, be looking. Any, oh, Commissioner Carlson, excuse me.
No, thank you for your part.
Yeah, thank you.
Excellent, as usual.
Have a great eclipse.
Camp Taloli.
We will.
All right.
I just had one other comment back to you, Mr. Chair. Is it legal to fish in the dark?
It's sunset and sunrise, and I think that's...
So there's two minutes there you can't fish in that hole?
No, it's legal, or it will be this time.
Are the fish awake when it starts?
That's what I wanted, Allison to tell us.
The sun is still up. You just can't see it behind the moon. It's sunset, sunrise.
So maybe that's when you get lucky in that hole.
It's, that's about how often I catch a fish, every eclipse. Okay. Next items are consent calendar, and Commissioner Cameron, I'm told that you're the one.
And are we moving one of those off consent?
No, we'll just deal with it.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Chair, under Board of Commissioners, move that we recommend approval of the Croft Vineyards LLC Salem, Oregon, OLLCC application. Also, under Board of Commissioners, ratify an order appointing Chuck Cybrant as interim Juvenile Department Director effective July 31st, 2017. Under Business Services, approve a recommendation to uphold pay grade for classification number 220, Group Worker 2, and adjust pay grade upward for classifications number 019, Legal Assistant Supervisor, and number 583, Nutrition Educator. Under Health, approve an order appointing Kathy Schnelby to the Intellectual and Development Disabilities Advisory Committee with a term ending June 30th, 2021. Under Public Works, receive a hearings, receive the hearings officer's decision approving conditional use CE case number 17-014-GUST, Clerk's File Number 5730.
Second the motion.
Case been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar that's just been read. Although, further discussion? Hearing that all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. That motion passes. I'm going to break into our agenda just a little bit because Kathy Schnelby is here. We're having an opportunity, she's one we just appointed to the Intellectual Development and Disabilities Advisory Committee. So Karen Perkins and Kathy, if you'd come up and let us have an opportunity to meet her, please.
Well, nothing she can say can change our minds now, right?
No, I guess not. That's a good point. Whatever you want to say now doesn't matter.
Get the job and then get interviewed.
So, good morning. I'm Karen Perkins. I'm a clinical supervisor with Intellectual and Developmental Disability Services, and I'm here with Kathy Schnelby, and we're recommending, and you already approved her for appointment to our IDA Advisory Committee. So she's here today to provide any answers to questions you might have.
Well, I would. Kathy, we've read your stuff, but could you tell us a little bit about yourself? And I see 40 years of background, would maybe go into that a little more?
I've, my educational background is in recreation therapy and working with children in a recreational park, and then I, you know, life comes around things. So I've ended up working for the Woodburn School District as a recreation therapist as part of IDA or Special Education Laws, and at the same time, spent about 20 years working at the Easter Seals Children's Therapy Center, doing mental health counseling for families that have kids with developmental disabilities. So I've worked with children as young as two and with adults as old as 89, on all parts of the gamut for those that have developmental disabilities. The combination of working with developmental disabilities and those that also have mental health issues is a pretty complex situation, so we need a lot of support. So not wanting to work full-time anymore, but you know, after you've got 40 years of experience, it's kind of like silly to waste all that education and experience. So this is an opportunity to help, continue to help families in our area and younger people coming into the field to figure out how to help these families and continue to keep their kids as healthy and as involved in the community as possible.
So Kathy, I'm trying to figure out, what's a recreational therapist? Because I think I might need one.
You might. We forget to play.
Is that what it is?
Yeah, that's, the recreation therapists use any modality to help children. There's an educational component of just learning how to use recreational facilities in our community, also helping kids with developmental disabilities understand the difference between play and work, and for their families, how important it is, because all typical children learn how to live in this world through play. And unfortunately, when we have a child with a developmental disability, we tend to focus on the daily activities and jobs because our society is so geared towards employment. But where our families and our children really fit into the community is in that social realm and the recreational realm, because that's where they can excel and be, probably have the most success of being accepted. So it's using recreational activities to help them learn academic skills, physical skills, emotional regulation. So it's a, it's a fun way of learning and continuing to develop.
And then one more thing that we have in common, creating opportunities, is a group that I've tried to help with. My daughter's highly involved, and actually, I've emceed for a couple of years an event that would probably fit your recreation therapy. We're just supposed to be fun for these kids and their families.
Right.
And she says Cheryl Sisneros is the most amazing person she knows.
Isn't she a wonderful woman?
I thought you might say that.
Yes, I love, so, yeah, with the closing of Easter Seals, I was on the committee that, that we kind of worked around with the Kaiser Grant to help see how we were going to facilitate all the kids back in the community for services, and through that, got to meet Cheryl, so she's wonderful. So I'm sitting on that advisory committee with her group, too, so.
Wonderful. Well, thanks for offering your capabilities and abilities. It'd be a big help.
More than welcome.
I'm sorry if I've said too much, but...
No, thank you for your service.
And thanks for coming in today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We just have two action items this morning. The first is, under Business Services, we consider approval, and he's here, of a public improvement agreement with Andy Metcalf Construction in the amount of $1,102,879 for your sake. No sense. That's cutting it perfect. For the Juvenile Court Edition Project, Colleen Kuntz-Chafens. Good morning, go ahead.
Good morning, Colleen Kuntz-Chafens, for the record, Business Services Director. I'm here today to talk to you about our public improvement project with Andy Metcalf Construction. I'd like to introduce you to the team if I could. So over here is Larry Tilford in the back. Kevin Burton's our project coordinator, and Andy Metcalf is the owner of Andy Metcalf Construction, who'll be working on our juvenile court expansion project. Andy's got a lot of jobs in the area, and if you want to hear more from him, I can have him come up and you can speak with him, but this is the project, pardon?
If you wouldn't mind, Andy, do come up.
Oh, Andy, come up.
Because I have seen your name on signs all over the area. But, go ahead.
Truly blessed, for sure.
All right, Colleen, go ahead.
So Andy, tell us a little bit about yourself.
Well, a little bit about myself. Obviously, I'm Andy Metcalf. I'm the primary owner of Andy Metcalf Construction. We primarily do just commercial industrial construction. I've been in Salem since '86, when I got out of the service. I raised my family in Sublimity, which, Sam, you may know, my kids.
Microphone a little closer.
Oh, I'm sorry. And at which time we, me and my wife got divorced 2006. I moved to Salem and got started back up with Andy Metcalf Construction. Most of my experiences, 25 years, I spent with a local commercial contractor, Dahlke Construction, and kind of just, while I was with them full-time, I actually ran my business on the side to help facilitate sending my kids to private high school and all of that kind of stuff. But anyway, we're very fortunate right now. We've got 16 employees. We've got an office staff number of project managers. Truly blessed with, obviously, the economy being well, but we're doing a number of projects, a lot of school projects from St. Paul, adding a gymnasium for them, seismic upgrades in St. Paul. We've got a project at Jefferson School District, one for Lafayette in Albany. We're doing a project for Department of Revenue, and we're soon to be doing this project as well. We've got a private one coming down the chutes here for an investment company here in Salem, downtown Salem, hopefully doing a historical remodel downtown. We're kind of in talks with them right now, so hope to be a part of that as well. So, yeah, that's just a little bit about me. Probably talked too much, sorry.
You and your 16 employees are going to be busy, or are...
We are very busy right now, yes.
So Commissioners, on May 26, we put out ITB to look for services. Our focus here on all of our projects that we're working on are really local economic development as much as we can, and so trying to pull in our local contractors and subs, which we've really accomplished to do on this project, as well as our public safety building project. So I wanted to highlight that for you. So this contract, we had five bids received. One of the bids was determined to be non-responsive in their first-tier subcontractor disclosure form, so after we went through all of the checks and things that you have to do, Andy and his team were the responsible bidders. This contract is just over $1,001,001,2879. We have a small tenant improvement that we're working to fix some existing light fixtures, fixtures in the court, in the existing court that will match the rest of it as we're doing it. So we're matching some carpet and some light fixtures just to tie it all in nicely. So that's the contract. We're getting ready to get started out there at the end of August, so we're ready to get going. Andy and his team, we've talked about capacity. We've met with them and talked about the ability to keep up with what we've got, to work with the state courts on the number of concerns they have around noise, around how to get this done while they're still in session. We're working with Chuck Cybrant to make some accommodations for staff there so they have, can be relocated to get that stuff done, and the court's still in session, and Andy has made some compromises in how we're going to get that done. So that's where we're at today, and I just seek your approval on approving this contract.
Suddenly thinking about contempt of court things going out, the hammer swinging, so it's a little different situation. Commissioner?
So I might have missed the last facilities work session that we had with the update on where we're at, but how does this fit in with the broader project of the juvenile administration piece?
Okay, so this is, we can't, what we're going to do is, we canceled our CMGC for that prior and brought Andy in on this piece. We're still working with Carlson-Vite on the design and development for the new juvenile admin building. We haven't started that really yet. I want to get this building going because we've got this and public safety going at the same time, but we are working with Carlson-Vite. We start, once we break ground out of public safety and go on, then Carlson-Vite will get in full earnest on design. We have some preliminary designs. We'll come back and have a work session with the board to discuss.
Okay, and so just the, again, I think that we were talking about a new building, then talking about refurbishing. The old building, now I've heard that there's discussion about doing a new building again.
Correct.
If we do a new building again, and there's connectivity between the new... If we do a new building again and there's connectivity between the new building and this addition, how are you going to sync that up? I mean, that's the concern. Because at one point, there was discussion about a single court security, so we wouldn't have to have two, you know, and so it would be like a one entrance with duals. So can you still do that by moving this forward now and doing that later?
Yeah. We're, because what we're discussing, and this is again, just discussions, because we haven't worked it through the board yet, is the existing juvenile admin building, that's to be determined whether we demolish that or not and put a new building right in front of that. As far as a court connection, all the courts will now be in the new juvenile, in the juvenile detention with the new court expansion, so they'll have the two courts there. In the design, both the office staffs are together and the court's on the external piece, so there's two courts. There's a way for them to come through. You're talking about the access path that we talked about in the back, correct?
Yeah, I just don't remember exactly what it was. I just remember the idea that if we could economize on court security by not having one in one building and one in the other building.
Correct.
So I just want to make sure that we're continuing to.
Working with the sheriff on that, and the sheriff is, there'll be a deputy on staff as far, we have a court security person with a little office right there, so they'll be able to manage both courts.
Yeah.
And there's only some, one court is really a, a non-detention court and the other is the detention court. So there's two various, one's more of a family court, the other's the other, so.
All right. Just checking.
I think we have some decisions ahead yet, though.
Oh, yeah, sounds like it.
You know, I, just to follow up to Commissioners, I think the last plan we, we discussed, we're, we're still with the dual courtrooms and one security and it'll be more efficient, so.
Yes, it will.
We need to get this done.
Yep.
Move on to the next step later.
The goal is we wrap this up by June of next year, so.
Excellent.
Hopefully sooner.
Hopefully sooner, that's the goal.
As long as the weather keeps up. Yes, that's right. Okay, so, Mr. Chair, I would move that the board approve the public improvement agreement with Andy Metcalf Construction Company in the amount of one million, one hundred, two thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars for the Juvenile Court Edition Project.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the agreement with Andy Metcalf Construction Company. Any further discussion? See, hear nothing? All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Go to work.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the last item under action we have this morning is under Public Works, we receive and consider appeal of a hearings officer's decision denying conditional use of CU seventeen oh one two Greenwood, Clerk's File fifty-seven twenty-nine. And Joe Fenimore is here to go over with us.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Joe Fenimore. This item for you today is a conditional use to change the occupant of a temporary hardship dwelling on fifty-five acre parcel in an EFU zone located on San Yam Loop Southeast in Almsville. In two thousand and six, the applicant's got approval for a temporary mobile home to house a caregiver for Mr. Greenwood. In two thousand and ten, they were granted approval to convert that hardship mobile home to a secondary farm dwelling to house an employee of the farm and to convert an existing accessory structure into an apartment to house the caregiver. The hardship was renewed on a yearly basis for Mr. Greenwood until September two thousand and sixteen. In December two thousand and sixteen, the applicant filed conditional use case sixteen thirty-three to change the medical hardship from Mr. Greenwood to Mrs. Greenwood. That decision was denied by the planning director and due to some unusual circumstances was not appealed. On April fifth, two thousand and seventeen, the planning director allowed the applicant to refile the application and send the matter straight to the hearings officer. The hearings officer conducted a public hearing on May third and left the record open until May tenth. And on June twenty-seventh, the hearings officer issued a decision denying the request. And that decision was appealed to the board on July twelfth. In the denial, the hearings officer found the applicant did not satisfy several of the criteria. The applicant failed to provide the requisite medical hardship certificate from a medical doctor, did not demonstrate that the care needed by Mrs. Greenwood could not be provided by a family member, did not identify the specific extent and nature of the care needed and that the proposed caregiver had the ability to provide that care. In addition, the hearings officer found that the mobile home on the property that was approved as a secondary farm dwelling is not being occupied by an employee of the farm as required and therefore is in violation of Marion County Code. Under the provision in seventeen one ten six eighty, a land use permit cannot be issued of a property in violation of the code unless that permit would correct the violation. In the appeal, the applicant disagrees with the conclusions of the hearings officer made in a number of the findings. She argues that the certificate provided was adequate to meet the criteria, that family members are unable to care for her, that the proposed caregiver is qualified, and that the occupant of the mobile home does perform work on the property to offset some of the rent cost. In the appeal, the applicant did not provide addition, any additional evidence, and all the arguments were already considered by the hearings officer. The board has the options to accept the appeal or man the matter back to the hearings officer, requiring an agreement to, from the applicant to extend the one hundred and fifty-day decision-making deadline, accept the appeal and schedule a public hearing. The suggested hearing date is August twenty-third, two thousand and seventeen. Deny the appeal and uphold the hearings officer's decision denying the request. Staff recommends a third option to deny the appeal and uphold the hearings officer's request, decision, excuse me. And I'll be happy to answer any questions or try to.
Commissioner, go ahead.
Thank you. So how much of this is state law and how much of it is code that we have put on top of state law?
This is all, this is all right out of, follow the ORS and OARs.
So it's, so the ORS and the OARs require you to have a doctor's certificate?
Correct.
And they?
And I, I will double check that, make sure that's the same, that we have the exact same wording. I'm not sure we have the exact same words.
All right. And the OARs and the ORS's require us to determine whether or not another family member could take care of them rather than a caretaker?
Correct.
And the ORS and the OARs require that if someone's in a secondary dwelling, they have to be an employee, a W-two employee?
It doesn't, it doesn't use those words. It is, it is, it is.
More general.
More general, correct, yes.
Right. So we have created some specific interpretations of what the ORS's and the OARs say in order to get to this conclusion?
Correct.
Right. So the board would have the authority to interpret differently than what the hearings officer might have done in this case. We're not bound by state law precisely on what this decision was.
Correct, there is room for interpretation.
Okay, how much did the applicant pay to appeal the case from the planning director to the hearings officer?
There wasn't, the, the fee for the conditional use to change the occupant is a hundred dollars for that process. When we allowed her to reapply, after the, after she never appealed it, it was the same fee, the hundred dollars.
It was a hundred dollars to the hearings officer?
And I, yes, and I sent it straight to the hearings officer. There was no extra charge.
And then what is the cost to appeal it to the board?
I believe it's, Corey, is it, I think it's five hundred?
Five hundred dollars.
And if you accept the appeal, if you don't accept the appeal, you get, they get some, some of it refunded back.
Right, okay. And I'm just curious, did, I read it last night, but I read it quickly. So was there an attorney involved with them or are they appealing, are they just handling their own case?
After the first denial, there wasn't appeal, then she had her attorney involved, and that's who was, who represented her at the hearing before the hearings officer. I didn't see his name on the information submitted.
Yeah, that would be, probably just why, I want, you'll, you'll be giving us the file if we accept the appeal, right?
Correct, oh, yes.
All right. All right, so I'll just say I'm very interested in taking this appeal because it is, as I mentioned to Joe, a poster story for what I went to the legislature and explained that we were dealing with this last time. And the answer that I got from the legislature is that we could deal with things like this under current law. So I'm very interested in making sure that if that's true, that we can, so.
Mr. Cameron.
I have a few questions that, you know, reading this, trying to understand this. So there, Joe, there's already a secondary dwelling on the property, the way I read this.
So there's the, the main house, there's the mobile home, and then there's an accessory structure that was converted to an apartment.
Okay. And there's a Dr. Hampton that lives in a secondary farm dwelling. Is that the apartment or is that the mobile home?
That's the mobile home.
Okay, and he, the issue here is that he's supposed to be an employee of them on the farm to live there.
Correct.
And there's some concern as to whether he is a paid employee or he just, is there a part-time because of his other business that he travels in?
That is correct, yes.
So is the application to change the mobile home from a secondary or is this to add in a whole another one?
The, the application is to, is, Mr. Greenwood is no longer on the property, so the application is, is to change the care to being needed for Mrs. Greenwood.
I understand that. So there's, there's three dwellings, though.
Correct.
So which dwelling is?
The current caregiver lives in the apartment, and he was providing care for Mr. Greenwood, and now he will provide care for Mrs. Greenwood instead. So he'll still be in the apartment.
So, so if this, if this request is denied, what has to come off the property? The apartment inside the barn or the mobile home?
The mobile home has to be removed and the apartment has to be made into a non-living area.
Both of them?
Yep.
Yes.
So they're only applying for one, I, I, that's why I was confused in here, because they're only applying for one change, but there's two additional units. So why would both of them have to come off?
Okay, let's go, let me go back a step. If you determine that the secondary farm dwelling is not being occupied by an employee of the farm, then it's in violation. It has to be removed. If you determine that it is, you could determine also, if you accept the appeal, that it is occupied by an employee of the farm, and you could stay there, and you could determine that the hardship is, is not needed for, for Mrs. Greenwood and deny that. So there are some, there are some other twists in this particular property.
Mr. Chair, that's why I asked the question about whether or not an employee has to be a W-two employee or whether they can just get rent, and do they have to be a full-time employee or can they be a part-time employee? And those are the things that we could explore in our interpretation of it, it sounds like, by Joe.
Mr. Chair, from me. So, so my compensation could be rent. We could interpret that as an employee.
That's what we, we're not here to do that today in the hearing. We're here to decide whether or not we would accept the appeal, and then we would look into those legal issues. If we deny the appeal, then we won't look into them.
Correct.
Which is why I want to do that.
So, so I'm asked, Joe, what, what, I don't like tearing down both these buildings, right? These, I, I was just thinking it was the one, but what you're saying, based on this ruling, I didn't get to, maybe I didn't get to the place where, I saw where the, the one had to be removed within ninety days, but I didn't see where the second one had to go away. So why, why would you, in your opinion, want us to do that, I, I mean, to accept this?
They were both put there, allowed under land use process, a conditional use with, with conditions, and if the conditions aren't continually, continually satisfied, then they become a violation. Now, that's a short answer that I can give you.
I guess I'm struggling with, they applied just to change one, and now we're gonna, if we, if we don't allow this appeal to go forward, we're gonna require them to remove two. That's my struggle with this, so I guess I, I don't want to see that happen.
Well, if you don't, you can make a motion to accept the appeal.
I just have a couple of comments. I've found some connection with help on the farm. I didn't have a whole lot to do with that. There are some, and maybe we get better documentation on the health issues. I don't find anybody that testified at the public hearing that had a problem with it even leaves me, and it's not a valid thing, but it's how I think, what does it hurt? So I think, I think I would like an opportunity to look at it and see if we can have a bit of a liberal interpretation. I shouldn't even probably say that, but see if there's a way that we can make it work for these people.
I agree with you, Mr. Chair, and I'll make that motion, but I, I also want to make a comment that these people are at least trying to go through a legitimate process, and we've got all these other people that are just.
Parking them.
Yeah, thumb in the nose and parking them. So, Mr. Chair, I will move that.
We accept the appeal.
We will, yeah, we will accept the appeal of the hearings officer's decision denying conditional use of CU seventeen dash one two Greenwood, Clerk's File Number five seven two nine.
And I think, do we want to set the hearing date for August twenty-third in that motion?
You can do that. You have until, the hundred and fifty days is up on September eighteenth, so if you want to go at, at a later date, you can. I don't, that's two days after the eclipse. I don't know if that's a problem.
We'll be all right. We should be back here by then.
I'm just throwing that out there.
Okay, what was the date?
August twenty-third is their suggested date.
Is that acceptable with you?
Sure, I'll be here. If I don't get pulled up to.
Yeah. I'll second the motion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. We do receive and consider the appeal of a hearings officer's decision in case seventeen oh one two Greenwood, Clerk's File fifty-seven twenty-nine, with the hearing date set as nine thirty, August twenty-third. Any further discussion? I don't hear any, so then all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thanks, Joe.
That's the end of our scheduled meeting. Places, the thing to do yet is to read the places. We'll be together in the coming week. Today at noon, twelve to one o'clock, a Woodburn Marion County meeting at Luisa's Taqueria, five twenty-three Front Street in Woodburn District. I won't be going to that. I'll be up at our Rotary Meeting where Kurt Schrader will be the speaker in Staton. At two o'clock to three, Capital Community Television Taping CCTV Office, Studio Two, five seventy-five Trade, Straits, Southeast in Salem. Nine, on Wednesday the third at nine, Thursday the third, excuse me, nine thirty to eleven thirty, Department Head Elected Official Meeting, Commissioners Boardroom, Fifth Floor, five fifty-five Court Street Northeast in Salem. And that's followed at three thirty to four fifteen, a Courthouse Square Green Team Recycling Tour, Courthouse Square Lobby, First Floor, Fifth Street, five fifty-five Court Street Northeast, First Floor. Monday, nine to two, a board retreat on solid waste plantings. That'll be at the Broadway Commons, Third Floor Boardroom, thirteen hundred Broadway Street Northeast in Salem. A big one for us at two o'clock on Monday, the new groundbreaking, new building groundbreaking ceremony, the new Public Safety Building, and that's at thirty-six ten Almsville Highway Southeast in Salem. Should be a nice event. Tuesday morning, seven thirty to eight thirty, the State and Marion County Meeting, Covered Bridge Cafe, five ten North, Third Avenue, Staton. That's followed by a calendar review if we get back in time, and Sovereign Conference Room, Fifth Floor, five fifty-five Court Street. And then next Wednesday at nine o'clock is our regularly scheduled board meeting. So, other than it's hot, anything else you wanted to?
No air conditioning.
Yeah, how's that going?
We, we're fine. We've got a little one in our bedroom, so we close all the doors. I sleep, I sleep fine.
All right.
Opened up the house. It was down to seventy-two this morning when I woke up and said.
Perfect.
Well, you know, that's what is amazing about Oregon. As I'm looking at this weather forecast, I mean, a hundred, nine degrees today, it was supposed to be, but the low is, what, sixty-six or something like that? It cools down at night here, where like when I go to Texas and visit my son or even Idaho, those evenings are going to stay really warm. And I can remember when we lived in Boston, when my husband went to law school, right after we got married, first night we were there, it cooled down and we opened up that screen door to let the air in, and a big wave of like wet sauna, hot air came flying through.
Never mind that.
Yeah, exactly, so I, that's one thing I love about living here.
I noticed a lot of smoke in the air this morning.
Yeah, yeah, the sun was real red, wasn't it?
It's, uh, that fire is not going too well.
I'm glad you brought that up. So, first of all, that's supposed to be coming from British Columbia, at least it sounded like.
Oh, the smoke is that we have down here?
But I did have a note, and I didn't send you a copy from a new, I'm sorry, I don't know her name right off. She introduced herself, new aide with Senator Merkley, and so she wanted to meet, meet me and us and.
I got the same email.